You're live.
All right, well, welcome everybody to this special meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union Board on Wednesday, October 1st, a meeting at the Bellas Falls Union High School. And the sole purpose of our special meeting tonight is to review and decide on responses to a survey that have, a survey that's come to us from the Vermont School Boards Association at the request of the Act 73 Redistricting Task Force. So we're called to order at 6:01. We'll see if there are any communications and public comment. And if not, we'll dive right back into this. And so let me state again that this survey that we have shared with you, the questions and draft responses to each of those questions. When we first got that, if you remember, I think it was at our last meeting, we asked the superintendent to send a message to say, this is really short notice, it requires competing people. And we did get a response right away from the co-chair, Edie Granning, who basically said, apologies, don't over stress, you know, do what you can. And I don't know, as another prefacing comment, last night Caitlin and I, and I'm not sure who else might have been on the, at the meeting, a Zoom meeting hosted by the Vermont School Board Association, were both co-chairs, Edie Granning, the House of Representatives in Vermont, and Senator Martine Gulick, the other co-chair, responded to a whole number of questions that had been sent in by VSB, Vermont School Board members around the state. There were 101 people on the Zoom call, including staff. So that was about a handful of staff, but more than 90 school board members around. Was anybody else?
No.
None?
I didn't, I was okay for about it.
So they did talk a little bit about this survey last night. They encouraged us to respond. They said that the committee is reading the responses. And it's also useful to know for all of us that the website for the redistricting task force really does include recordings of every meeting. And it also includes all of the public comment. So you can go in there and see everything, everybody from around the city has been submitting. So it looks like Andy's going to put the draft up for us to see. And my, Caitlin and I can share a few more observations from last night, specific to what they talked about. But my thought for tonight was if we could just go through each of the questions. And if anybody has any editorial suggestions, I'll make note of them. And then my plan is to submit the responses on our behalf either tomorrow or Friday, no later than Friday. So with, with that, shall we just, you know, the obvious first is to put in the name of our, in this case, the supervisory union. They sent the survey, if I didn't, I didn't state this clearly, they sent it to every chair of every school board in the state. And they made it clear that if you're a chair of more than one board, in my case Westminster as well as the SU, please respond from both boards. So Westminster will review the questions tomorrow night. You've got a meeting of Rockingham next week to review them before you submit. So the first substantive question, have you discussed redistricting as a, as a school board? And so I responded, any editorial suggestions, any changes?
There are.
What?
It was really great, thorough.
Okay.
Thorough.
Well, another aspect of it is that they don't need to be extremely lengthy. I mean, that's part of their, they don't want to redo all this, would be my guess. But secondly, they realized that they requested this on short notice and that, you know, it takes process for us.
And they also ask, in this case, insights or, and, and details or details.
Say it again.
They ask for details. So this is a question where having details, I'm just saying.
Right.
Is important because they talked about what information, insights or details have those conflict, you know, included. So to me, it, that, you know, the, shall I say, the important aspects of that question requires a longer paragraph. So, I mean, I didn't have any editorial comments to make.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention, you were talking about lengthy, but this is one of those that needs that kind of insights to me.
Thank you. And the gist of it for the public is that we have discussed it, that this board has voted at a warm meeting to express our intent that we were, we prefer to stay at a supervisory union, that we're willing to explore conversations with our neighbors. And that in addition, we were taking action. And now we can say, we have voted to join the first Board of Cooperative Educational Services organization in the state. Wyndham Northeast voted at our most recent meeting to be a part of that. Okay, next question. Do we plan to take a formal position on redistricting? The answer is yes, and we have, so that we've already done that, see, you know, see the statement above. How are we engaging with the community? So far, nothing beyond discussions at, at public meetings and including, go ahead.
I forget, we do have it up on our website.
Maybe I should add that.
I didn't think of that when I read that. I'm sorry. But it is, it is a way that we are engaging.
Plus, we have posted, and are these questions and answers on the site?
These are not on there, no.
But when they're final, they would be, okay. So we have a section on the SU website, okay? With information for the public. Okay. Thank you, I'll make that change.
I do wonder if we might think about doing like public forums or community meetings at some point to loop folks into what's going on.
I think especially is the maps, you know, Andy made a point before we started the meeting officially. Do you want to describe what you have learned about that process?
So last week, I was at a meeting and Emily, Representative Kornheiser, was at the meeting. And she was asked how the voting on the maps was going to take place. And so there was some assumption that it would be, here's map one, is it an up or down vote type of thing? And here's map two, up or down? And she informed that it would be, it would go to committee and would follow the normal committee processes. And so amendments would be allowed. And it, I think the question was asked, so is it, is it possible that new maps wouldn't even come out of committee? And she said, well, it could. So, and then obviously the Senate has to do their committee, so it would end up at a conference of, a committee or conference or conference committee. So I think these three maps are just going to be a start.
Yeah.
I guess.
So I certainly think, you know, hosting as an SU probably with all, but just to have it the most efficient for members of our towns, but hold that thought. And when you think it's a good idea to convene one or host one, let's, let's discuss it and plan it. Yes, Karen.
So the maps you're talking about are like, you know, the map of the state, is this what you're saying?
The redistricting, so the, the redistricting task force
Yeah.
is supposed to come up with three maps.
Three maps, okay. Up to three, yeah, up to three.
One of which has to include supervisor unions.
That's right, that much I know about that, so.
Okay, and they have to have that done by December 1st. And they have to have a comprehensive report of what they've done. All the public comment will be included in that report, at least as a dependence.
Mm-hmm, right.
As part of it. But anyway, this is one, one step in the process is they're seeking, seeking input. So we can add even to point B down there, plus the website.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Part C, considering data and information from a variety of sources. And then I, we listed a variety, any additions or directions to that section?
No.
It could be a short reading.
Great job.
It really is.
I was just, I was just wondering if it's worth putting in this section somewhere? Like your participation, that, you know, that one of our board members and, or board chair is, is an active participant, like are you, are you actually on the task force yourself?
No.
Okay.
No.
But you do, you have been playing a pretty big role in all of this.
Well, I refer to the information from the Rural School Community Alliance, that's what she, uh, yeah, it's in that paragraph. Papers developed or compiled by the Rural School Community Alliance. And I chair that steering committee. I don't know that.
We need to put a person's name.
Okay. Yeah, I just, you know, because the question seems to be about like, you know, where are you getting your information? What are you doing? It's like, well, we have, we have, we have an insider.
But we also are members of, some, of some of us are members of the Rural Schools Alliance.
Exactly.
And so, you know, that there's membership or.
I really like that you included the horse merger with Grafton, so Westminster and that's just it. That was the most concise version of what happened I've ever read, and it was so clear. It was really, really, I'm glad that's in there. And word to us. And the next, the next question, how, this is one Andy gave me some help with as well. It's just the focus on this is improved student outcomes. And, you know, you know, we start with, we have really talented, dedicated people. And that our town's people are engaged and supportive as well.
Yeah.
I do think that the innovation and the support for the instructional leadership teams has been just a real asset, Andy. And we're seeing the fruits of that with improved student testing outcomes and improved climate in schools.
I love the farm to school of foods, nutrition program, that was nice, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, really. Lots of fun.
So it will be interesting if we get to provide more information about these things going forward.
Yeah. What are they going to do with it? We don't know.
Yeah, exactly. Do we, did we have any data that we want to add? We don't need to, if, if.
I, I did get a little bit from Deb that I can send to you. So, you know, as far as ELA, 42% of our students in 2024, 42% of our, I'll send you the exact line, but 42% of our students demonstrated proficiency in English language arts and 50% of our students matter exceeded the average growth. And in spring 2025, that number increased to 48%, demonstrated proficiency and 55% exceeded average growth. So there was a slight increase. And then I was just pulling together also the math. So with mathematics, in 24, 44% of our students demonstrated proficiency. And in spring 40, in 2025, 49% demonstrated proficiency. So we're projecting the right way, which.
We wish for higher.
We wish for higher.
The way that we address this here is just saying that our member districts are seeing tangible improvements in students' academic performance attitudes and behaviors. You know, I don't know that we need to include numbers or, yeah. Okay. The strengths of our current district and, and, and system. So any, any additions or changes here?
These are the big areas.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, I, I think my only comment on this is that I, I think such an important piece that, that the sort of the opposite of this is the fear that there will, that a bigger district means less kind of like local focus, local accountability. So you say it at the end, but I almost wonder if we could like emphasize that even more because I feel like that is the real push and pull is this, you know, fear of losing that community involvement where the community, like we are so accountable and wanting to see these students do well. And when you have this bigger district, you know, there's fear that that gets lost. I mean, I think you do say it at the end, that the town members, agency accountability and engagement. I'd almost want to see that like bolstered, I'm not sure how, but.
Ah, okay. Do you want, do you want to put that, that sentence in bold, Jamie?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Having problems with them. They're still on and they can still hear you and see everything.
Oh, okay.
I'm having problems with that screen, so.
So just so you guys know, we cannot see you now. Can you just say that you can hear us?
We can hear you.
Thank you, perfect, okay. So going on then to, you can tell at this point, these are pretty succinct responses. Oh, Lynn's got something, hold on.
Um, I was, we're on number five, correct?
Yes.
One thing that I feel is a strength for our area is the fact that the majority of the schools are in rural areas and they can do outdoor education outdoors.
Thank you.
And if we get lumped into one of the big city ones, we lose that.
Even, even, even the central school does with a limited space that they have. They manage to grow food and do that kind of thing. Teen or Jamie, was that one of you? Oh, Teen, your hand's up, okay, thank you.
I was going to say, another strength I think we have is we have, I don't know if this is, makes sense, but we have like strong leadership within the SU. So like when the, when the mandate from the state came down that we had to have evidence-based programs and testing things, we had already put those in place. So we were ahead of the state in that way. I think that's worth noting.
Do you just say that again, I'm, I'm taking notes, Teen?
So when this, when the state came down with the mandate that we needed like evidence-based literacy and math curriculum, as well as like testing that, you know, is in line with science of reading and that kind of work, we had already implemented that before that mandate came down. So we have, you know, leadership within our SU who are more than capable. And that would be, that, because that's one of my concerns, like what's going to happen to those people when districts merge? Are we going to end up with someone maybe who's not as capable as the people who we have in, in place right now, who are doing really good work?
And spread too thin. Thank you, I'll, I'll add both of those points under stress in number five. Thank you both. Okay, number six, what are the challenges or weaknesses? You can see here, I actually thought most of those challenges are out of our control.
Well, they are.
Anything?
I thought that was healthcare stuff, I think it was.
Pardon?
I thought, I mean, I feel like those are the things that we've just discussed, really, the, the ones that you put in here. But I don't have any additions, but somebody else says.
I don't know if it's worth mentioning, I'm not sure if it's as big a problem as it has been, but in years past, because of the smaller schools, smaller student numbers, we get penalized financially for spending too much per child. And we're supposed to be doing equitable education, but if we try to do equitable, then we get penalized.
Yeah, we, we've been able to stay under that cap using fund, fund balance surpluses, but those are going to dry up.
Exactly.
And that will be a, a challenge there. I, I mean, I think that Grafton has done a, a good job of trying to maintain those equitable pieces. But it gets really challenging to try and find, you know, a point two of a person to come and do work. So that, that, that's where the challenge starts to really hit home, but we've been lucky.
Well, and the board has worked hard.
Yeah, that's, that's, I mean.
And before we have the, the surpluses, you know, we were doing basic, just the basics that we had to by law, and we were still getting penalized, we had to pay a big fee.
Yeah.
You know, where that fee could have been used for education.
Yeah. I'm wondering if, under these circumstances, mentioning that here, my, in other words, if we say we're a small school and we've been being, and then they'd say, a bigger school, you would do less. So I, I might not, I mean, even though, I even though that absolutely correct, I'm sort of thinking, yeah, I'm being a little political here, I think, just in that.
Yeah, we need, we need that.
We want to know when and when not. But the history is important, I don't need that at all.
I, I would say, I mean, a challenge that I see from some families, and it's a very small thesis, we don't have the ability that if a family, you know, if there's a reason they would like to, they live closer to Grafton than they do to Saxon's River, they can't attend Grafton, right? Because they have to go to school where their district is. You know, I think that's inherent in what the system is, so I don't know if you need to call that out. But that's, that is just one of the pieces of a supervisory union that in a district you wouldn't have. There's a whole nother negative side of it that you kind of just pointed out that I don't, I mean, there's like, if you had a supervisory district, then you could say, well, bring all these kids over here, you know?
I think, I think for the purposes here, the, the challenges we've addressed are systemic. And what we're talking about here are smaller scale and kind of specific. And so I'd rather not get into that for, for these purposes.
What's that say?
Erin said exactly what I was thinking during our conversation was like, yeah, and then we, then it's like, well, go, let us help you with it.
Exactly. And, and you may see in, in a response to number seven, you know, I remember so clearly when Act 46 was being discussed, how we did the financial analysis. And we could see no cost savings and we didn't see the benefits. And we have worked to really improve those shared services where we could. And so I, I recommend we make a strong statement that we see no appreciable benefits. Except through the potential of the VOCs, which is what we're saying.
That's right.
Yeah, we're saying here with you. And then we, in number eight, saying we're working to, to seize those opportunities using their language through the VOCs. And then under, yeah, go ahead.
Because I was just thinking, I was thinking about what Teen had been saying earlier about some of the strengths that we have and, you know, and what keeps coming back is we, because the boards have found ways to combine after, you know, instead of 46, we have some things that other SUs don't have. We have one collective bargaining agreement. We have, so we're able to run very similar to a school district in a lot of ways. And that creates those efficiencies and those, those pieces. And, and I think that comes down to governance because boards could very much say, nope. You know, Rockingham, we want our collective bargaining agreement, we want this to be the way we are, right? And so.
And the other related to that, it might be useful to include here that we included in the collective bargaining agreement a clause that no longer, this is not the way to say it, but no longer penalizes a teacher who moves from one district to another. When they choose to retire, they get the benefit of all of their years. Whereas it used to be, if you were in Westminster, you had to start over in Grafton, or you had to start over in Rockingham. And we made that change for the support staff as well.
And I, and I think when, when there is a financial benefit, we look to, we look at consolidation of, of things. So like IT is the, the thing, or the food services, right? Those are things that were consolidated at the district level that then every student reaps the benefit of, as opposed to where we then get equitable because, because we're doing that. And so, so having that kind of a ability to have that pseudo kind of school district of, you know, operation, I think allow, is a benefit, so.
Yes.
I don't know how you could, I don't know how we would write this or if we'd want to put it this way, but to me, it sounds like our employee ownership model that I, it worked where everybody has an independent voice that works together for the greater good of everyone. So like each of our, each of our districts have their own voice and are able to speak up. And, and like, you know, this is how I do, like, the way we work is like, this department, this is how they work and they do their job and they make the decision that's best for how they do their specific job. But then for the bigger things, kind of like the things that we have consolidated, everybody comes together and, and decides how, how should we handle this? Because this impacts everyone, how can we, how can we make this work together? Along with each of our districts, like, what is the impact? Like if we do this, if Rockingham does this, how's it going to affect Grafton? Or how's, how's it going to affect?
Let me ask you a question about whether, because this is a, we've added a lot to this one, whether or not, I mean, which is wonderful, this, I'm looking at five, right, our strengths?
No, we're over here on.
And I, I bumped back up the strings.
To say is that if it may be worth doing A, B, I mean, I don't, you know.
To organize it a little.
Yep, because I want them to read this.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Right.
Because they're going to be reading a lot. So figuring out a little way, however, to make these points visible and stand out would be.
Bulleted list, Karen. Everyone loves a bulleted list.
I can, I can do that, not a problem.
I think for the big, for the big.
Let me, let me ask Andy a question that's related to the list that Rick went through. By, by federal law, we're required to work cooperatively in special education. Are we in, I mean, federal grants?
Right, but it's, it's Vermont that, under 46, consolidates special education to the district. So.
Under 46.
Or, or whatever, Forsact, because before that, special education was in each district.
Wow.
Own their own special educators. But we, we coordinate all of the grants.
Correct.
That, that is, that, we are that fiscal agency that does that piece of it.
My question is, what did we as an SU decide to do cooperatively? Transportation?
So transportation.
We could still do that as an independent town school district if we wanted.
I believe so. Food, food service.
Food or food, I know we adopted voluntarily.
IT.
Okay. So I think that's important.
Is nursing? Nursing is not. Facilities is not. But we also are, we do our copiers, which is actually created. But, well, it is, and it's kind of facility, it's a weird, but it, it's separate from IT that it runs in a different budget line. But what used to happen was each district had its own contract with different coffee providers. And we went with one provider for the whole SU, which has actually created a savings. Do we do that with, with other purchasing procurement practices? No, that's, that's, that's kind of a lot of that. Well, with, but yes, with curriculum, but not with like paper. But uh, not with like paper, not with like uh custodial supplies and things like that. It's something we started to really look at and be very honest with you with. All of what's kind of going on right now. I didn't think it was worth kind of bringing. That this year forward is it it might create a lot of confusion and there's enough confusion going on, um, but there. That's also where the BOSI potentially has advantages, because the BOSI could become. Of a buying agency where you then they buy for even a larger group.
Great, I'm glad to hear that, cause that's that's the only. One of the biggest benefits I could see of. Of combining with other districts or becoming a bigger unit was if we became a bigger buying unit and were able to put. I can't imagine the savings that would be that much that it would be. Worth the drawing, you know?
Yeah, no, it's like, you know, like. If we're buying toilet paper, right, if. If we're buying toilet paper for six buildings as opposed to one or two. We potentially could have a savings, right? If we're buying it for eight districts. Now there's a a volume savings.
Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, that but that buying it for six and. One of my jobs is procurement. It's just certain point where you save a little bit of money. To get to that point where you save enough to really, you know, like in this scenario, really make it worthwhile would have to be much bigger.
So to number five, we are making additions and I will use a bullet approach to make it easier, but to be read. Can we go to number nine now? The risk concerns? You know, I I'm, just let me know if you, I'm not gonna read it, so if you have any suggestions or changes here.
I think the one about increased time on school buses should be. A little bit more, and it just occurs to me while we were sitting here, we were talking about, like, it kind of came up with the outdoor activities. That could have a huge impact on kids' abilities to participate in extracurricular activities. Because if they're not gonna get home till seven, eight o'clock at night, they're, you know. And I say extracurricular, I don't mean just sports. School plays, school plays. It could, you know, even even parental participation, because if. You know, I'm not gonna let my kid do it if I have to drive to. Windsor.
Yeah, and that's the other. Man, there's people who don't, who are working, I mean, in other words, are not able to do that.
And one car families.
So yeah, this is where I've always thought that it's a bit classist, I have to say. You know, but from an economic point of view, I meant, you know, um. Because those are, you know, there are people who can drive their kids to these places, but others. Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Who does? Okay, Team, please go ahead.
Yeah, just on to what they're saying too. It seems like it would create this like economic va- vacuum, so like if. Like, thinking about what Rick was saying, like, if you have to go to this place, if school, if kids are taking so long on that. To get up to this other place on the school bus, right? Then the things that they might have done within their own community are probably not gonna happen. So not only is it, they might not be able to participate in activities because it's too far away from where they actually live. But also activities that might have been available within their town. May no longer have a base with which to support those activities, because kids are on the. Are going so far away just to get to school, that they can't make it back to their town to do those community. Events, like if my daughter had to start going half an hour away to. Wherever she wouldn't be able to make it to her gymnastics practice in time where she she can now, cause it's closer to her. I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. That's, I was trying to get at that with community viability and diminished economic viability.
For the communities selves, that's actually.
With what Karen said a little bit about not necessarily classes, but you know, you get into the the high school age kids that. Want part-time jobs or need part-time jobs, but they're not getting home from school till five thirty, six o'clock. Work at Dairy Joy.
I think you might, you know, if you get to swing it, so like, it would decrease parent participation.
Yeah, that's. That's one portion of that, but it's also gonna decrease all those opportunities for the kids.
Yeah, yeah.
From community.
I also, I think one thing uh that I have been thinking about is if you consolidate the. Existing districts, it's going to necessarily mean consolidation of some of the administrative positions, and I think that's like. The sell is that you have fewer superintendents and you pay fewer salaries and then you have some sort of cost savings. However, I think that. What I see are, first of all, that won't be entirely true, like you can't collapse one into like a district quadruple the size. And expect that you'll only have one superintendent, so I think what that means is that you would have a lot of turnover of. People who are really deeply tied to their communities, and I'm concerned about. What that means, are you gonna have superintendents who are comfortable and used to, and not to say, Andy, like, you would. Not be capable of going to managing an eight thousand student district, but that's a really big jump from where. The district population currently is, and so you either have to support staff in. Changing their whole approach and managing what that looks like, or working with a much larger central office. Or have people leave, and then you have to have people who may not be. So they won't be as familiar with the communities, cause the community by definition will have expanded from. A smaller community as we currently have it to a much larger one, so. I do have some concerns about what the staffing would look like at the central office level for a district of the size that they are talking about and what that would be.
So the idea of inserting employee retention and uh experience staff, and we don't have that in here, so I can add that. At least it opens that a little bit, yeah.
Rep- Representative Kornheiser um. Did publicly state that this seventy-three will not. Save money.
Did she really?
She said it very loudly. But what she did say is that it will stabilize taxes. So that, again, is her opinion on it, uh, but.
I don't understand.
Explain.
That's to be proved.
So I think, I think, I think in speculation here, so I don't wanna speak for her, but just in in spending some time on it. You're, just as Caitlin was saying, you're gonna need assistant superintendents, you're gonna need, you're you're gonna need. A similar sized workforce of administration to handle certain things, so. Whether you're superintendent or assistant superintendent or or associate superintendent, whatever you want, I mean, you're still gonna need layers of people. You get into these very large districts, you have, you know, she's talking to a superintendent from Maryland, she was a regional superintendent. Oversaw ten high schools, as a regional superintendent, right? So. You just have layers, and then so that cost doesn't go away. Where I believe they, they who, people who passed seventy-three and. Is the stabilization is through the foundational formula. Because when you, when you're saying here's, you can only have this much dollars, and you can only increase by five percent for five years. You will have control over how much your ed fund costs, so that's where the stabilization idea comes from.
So that's just about cost, not about product, I would argue.
I agree.
Exactly. Exactly. So any other risks and concerns?
It would increase, well, you have increased time on bus, it would increase transportation costs.
And then going back to, you know, the thinking of the older kids and the kids who drive to school. Do we really want new student drivers going from Bellows Falls to, and I'll use Windsor again, I don't know why, but you know, that's far enough, like, you know.
Amazing roads. You got three.
Let's go to Kathy, who hasn't spoken yet, and then Jamie then Team, go ahead.
Yeah, Lynn, Lynn mentioned, um, we do a lot with nature in our learning. We use um the Nature Museum, we also use Grafton Trails and. Okemo and sometimes Stratton for our ski program. You may lose all that. Um, something to kind of remember that. If a big um district, we're not gonna be able to do all those things.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I was just making a note.
Yeah, I I also, I also read that um along with kind of what Andy was saying, um. The in a separate, if you make a larger district, you then have all these teachers that are then on a similar contract, so you're bringing, you know. I I think it's pretty clear that the cost, this is not gonna be cost saving, and it's pretty frustrating that they're selling it as a cost saving, because. You're gonna have all these teachers that are in different places that you're all gonna bring up to a similar plateau. And so you're gonna have all these salary costs that are sort of hidden um in doing this, so I think there's a real. Um, there's a real risk that this is actually just gonna increase um, increase costs. It's it's pretty wild to me that they think this is gonna reduce costs.
Thank you, I wonder if. I I actually, that that statement isn't made yet, uh, let me maybe figure out a way to include that. You know, we don't have any evidence, we have a, we have counter, we don't have any evidence that this will save money.
Act forty-six ever save money? Did anybody retroactively or like, like look back and say, oh, this, you know, did X, Y, and Z? So therefore we should, the data says we should do this. I don't know if they've ever.
Never a formal study done of any kind, although the law asked that it be done, the law required evaluation, it's not been done. That's one of the things the Rural School Community Alliance has also pushed for. It's very, in my view, quite irresponsible.
I thought they flat out refused at one point to.
It's it's been anecdotal, there's no rigorous evaluation that's been done. Uh, Team, did you have something else?
No, I didn't.
Well, but thank you. Okay, yeah, Karen.
You know, I was just thinking about um our, you know, our town meeting. And um. What's, you know, so if this was to go forward. The decisions of finance are going to be at the state level, this is right? Yeah, so maybe it would be. The who of us to talk to? The town meeting leaders, you know, as we do with, and uh. Maybe they have a few comments that they would like to offer, I don't know the answer to that question, but I do know that the. The school board, I mean, the um. Town manager meetings, the planning commission is meeting sadly tomorrow night. The board meeting might afford it aid or something like that, um, because. Probably was, anyway, I've been thinking about that. And about how we're used to, we are presenting our budgets to the a local, you know, the town meeting. And what's going to happen actually to democracy in the state of Vermont? Those that have kept the town meetings, that's when I'm, I mean, I'm, this is, I don't know if you put this in here, but.
But there is, there is a, you know, I referred to the loss of democracy engagement. It's stronger when you, when we have our Westminster board meeting tomorrow night, because Westminster works so hard. With the help of Athens and Grafton to reinstate Westminster as a town school district, that is much stronger in their. Responses that will submit from Westminster.
Westminster, okay, thank you.
I stress the town meeting difference and all of that. So these are all great.
Just have a little question about um opportunity for Career Center, such a big part of Bellows Falls High School. These kids get to go to Brattleboro or Springfield and. That aspect, it's not clear what's gonna happen to that, and is that program just gonna be gone, or how does it affect those two institutions and? What about the opportunity for those kids going forward? From any high school?
The tech centers are, um, there's one of the maps they've tried to build around tech centers. That the task force has been looking at. I don't think they're at risk, um, personally, but but we'll see, I think they're highly valued.
I guess the subtlety is that. They're not, um, they're not the same. So some choose Brattleboro over Springfield because the programming is different, they have different opportunities, so right now. Bellows Falls is in a sweet spot where students are really being able to design what they wanna do with their future from an early age. It's it's such an opportunity, I'd hate to lose that.
I I would, I'm speculating here, but based on other states that I've worked in. If. So like River Valley does not have an automotive program. Brattleboro, Wyndham Regional has a, an automotive program. I speculate that if we were, let's say, attached to River Valley, that's the home. That if kids still wanted automotive, they'd either have to build an automotive program at River Valley. Or allow those kids to still access at Wyndham Regional, so, cause in another state. We had uh students who came to our school because we had certain programming and they were in a whole nother district. Um, and then we sent a student uh to another. Career Center in another district because they had a hus- uh animal husbandry, and we just didn't have that.
So we're talking increased transportation costs like Rick brought up earlier, it's just the same thing over and over.
One last thing from the supervisory union, um, that we talk about costs, and this is a risk, I think, or a concern. Of being in a bigger district is. Once those new districts are established, whether they're new districts or supervisory unions. You will have to hire a superintendent before it even exists, before there's even students attached to it. And whether you take sitting superintendents or bring them from out of state. There will be a cost contributed to having to run. This big entity here, and that superintendent is gonna have to hire a business manager. They're gonna have to hire a curriculum person, they're gonna have to hire a special ed director, because they have to develop a budget. So all that has to be built, and it has to be built in parallel, why the smaller districts continue to exist. So they've said they don't expect sitting superintendents to do both roles at the same time. So there will be this additional cost, transitional cost. So the the risk, the risk you have is kind of what Team was bringing up earlier, which is. You're gonna have either a brain drain, you're gonna suck all these people away for a year. Kind of thing, to to try and establish this, and. And then who's gonna be running, you know, are there enough qualified people to even fill in for a year?
Alright, so. Uh, this, this is really a kind of, I think, our first. Response, I think this is the beginning of what's a pretty long process, especially now that, you know, it's been clarified. That even when the task force. Makes whatever maps it does and and gives them to the legislature when they convene in January. It will then first go to committee. It won't, it won't be an up or down vote uh in the legislature. So we're gonna have a long process of giving testimony. Of getting engaged, the Rural School Community Alliance will keep working on our behalf. Have a chance to, we could testify on our own, you know, but I'll keep you through the alliance deeply involved and uh. But also, you know, look for other opportunities, I mean, it's gonna take. The more the better, to to try to help. The legislators understand even more fully the complexity of all of this and the. Unintended consequences again of what they're considering.
Can I ask, uh Cheryl, I know for the last part of the survey, they ask about who we've reached out to, and yesterday on the call, they were saying that when districts. Or SUs present to the committee or the task force that they have. Explored or are willing to engage in partnerships with other SUs, that that is weighed pretty heavily. Do. Is that part of what we're doing? Like, we we said that we would through this motion, are we thinking about reaching out to other SUs or districts to make those connections and to? See about that?
Well, absolutely, let me, let me go to two ways, though, I mean, in informally. Uh, we've, I, you know, I've already met with the chairs of Wyndham Southeast and uh both the supervisory union and the school district informally. Uh, there are other of those informal discussions going on with all of our neighbors. It without naming names, we've gotten some, no thanks, we're not interested from from some of our our neighbors. What seems to me, and I, and Andy and I think our our vote on the BOSEs model indicates that. That that's a structure that does allow us to look for the efficiencies and serve kids without disrupting. A current governance model that's within scale is the way I'm trying to describe it. It's 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 big. It's, it's, it's big, but Andy and the staff have been able to make it work. Uh, but to get it much bigger, we would really lose a lot, I believe. So that's why I find the BOSI's model so much more appealing. Because we were allowed to keep the same structure essentially that we've got, but keep looking for those efficiencies. And so in uh the response to number uh ten, the under A, I've now learned that Wyndham Southeast has voted to join uh the BOSI's. So that's yeah, they they did. I I talked to Deb Stanford, the chair of Wyndham Southeast School District yesterday, and she reported that the uh SU board voted to join.
So you'll edit that section.
Pardon?
So you'll edit that section.
I will edit that to update it.
Windsor's supposed to.
Mountain View Supervisor Union joined, right?
Yeah, Mountain View was the first to go and then Springfield.
Springfield, yep, and then we did, and then Wyndham South.
Southeast.
And then Windsor Southeast was supposed to vote.
So we'll check on that before we submit, yeah.
So the, the places that you spoke to about possibly joining together that said no thanks, was it no thanks to us or no thanks to the idea, to the concept?
No thanks to a supervisory union.
Okay, so it wasn't like, I don't wanna date you.
So um Two Rivers is supposed to vote tomorrow.
Oh, okay, good.
Windsor Southeast. She has her they have them down as a yes, so I'll have to double. I wasn't able to go to the meeting.
Check on that one so we can be current. That would be great.
And then Wyndham Southwest is supposed to vote tonight.
Okay, good. So maybe you'll, yeah, if you can verify all those, that would just be fabulous. And then I think, you know, where some of this that we've been talking about um in drafting this, look at the last sentence, you know, where um we stress the most promising collaboration through the BOSI's, improve student services as well as cost efficiencies, consistent with what is the purpose of X of seventy-three, but without disrupting the current governance model, which is appropriately scaled for the geography and characteristics of this SU's largely rural towns and villages. I tried to say that as succinctly as I could. Um, but I hope that that it just, you know, raises our our concern that the disruption would be massive.
So is our hope that they would consider us as part of the BOSI's, like if they are making a map that involves supervisory unions, they would consider the BOSI's as the like grouping of SUs and districts that would go together in one of those?
It achieves the purpose without um expanding current supervisory unions and districts.
Yes.
That's what I hope they finally realize. I don't know what impact that'll have for the foundation formula. Because currently, if the VAPS are not approved, then everything starts over and there's no foundation for it. So I don't, I don't know what that'll all be.
I I thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Um, any, any other comments from uh those online before we?
Let me get them over there.
Sure.
So you can see them. Like this. You lost them. And to drag them over there.
All right.
Hand up if we were dragging her.
Okay, great. Jamie, please.
Um, yeah, I guess my last question, I think it's wonderful. I I think this, this is well written, Cheryl. Thank you for taking the lead on this. One question I had is for Andy, and I don't mean to put you on the hot seat, Andy, um, but I, the way that so I joined a little in and out of the task force meeting, listened here and there. And one thing that Zoe Saunders characterized was that superintendents were in favor of uh a different model, that they're in favor of moving to, I believe, supervisory districts. Um, and I was wondering if you could speak to that a little bit and it like, are you, like Cheryl and Andy, did you work together on this and do you feel like this is good for our students? I guess, you know, we think this is good and we we like this model and we think it's good for our students, but I'm just curious if Andy, how much Andy, you had a hand in this and what your thoughts are?
Um, so I, Cheryl did send me this draft uh ahead of time and we did preview it. It echoes a lot of the conversations that we've had coming, leaning up to it. Um, you know, a- at the end of the day, I want what's best for our kids that's gonna serve our students and our community. That's where my loyalty is. It's not to some greater entity at this point. Um, you know, so the Vermont Superintendent's Association, uh the majority of superintendents are more in favor of supervisory districts or school districts as opposed to supervisory unions. I think that there's, you know, um selfishly thinking like less meetings sounds great, um but at the same time, you know, is that what's best for kids? And I think that's where um many even superintendents who have supervisory unions end up looking at it. It's like if a supervisory union can work and serve kids, great. It, you know, and uh where the next piece comes down to is that foundational formula is if you have large supervisory unions, how does a foundational formula work then and there? And so uh that's the bigger, because I don't think that will be good for kids in a supervisory union, a foundational formula. And and there's more to come on that. It hasn't been fully unpacked, but you're talking about different weights of kids. So if you're saying that Rockingham, those kids are gonna be weighted more and there's more dollars coming into Rockingham than there are coming into Westminster, how do we then start navigating that and 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 how is that equitable? Right? So that's, the whole point is to have equity and that's not equity, you know, so if you got more money coming in and um, you know, I I was happy to sign off on the letter when we sent the letter up. So um but I, I mean, yes, the, the a large percentage of superintendents were in favor of super supervisory districts or large districts.
Not as concerned as many of us are in rural areas about the risks that we talked about. Whether uh, you know, access to opportunities, impact on a village's economy, uh impact on democracy, all the, all the things that go with that local uh local engagement.
That I will say, um, yeah. Can't think of ladies last name right now. Elaine, um, with North Country.
Oh, yeah.
But the superintendent of North Country Supervisory Union, she has twelve su- school districts. And she cannot conceive of one school district. She, so she has been very vocal about maintaining in the supervisory union model. Now, some of those school districts don't even have kids, they school choice their kids and stuff like that, but they still have meetings, so you still have to go to them and stuff like that, so. Um, so not everyone's in, you know, just using that as, I think she's the largest supervisory union.
And they're also saying that we're geographically at our optimal or maximum, that we're not going to expand. That's the position that they're taking. That they're, as a supervisory union with twelve school districts and it takes her what, most of a day to get from one end to the other. So they're, they're just taking a strong stand that this doesn't apply to us. Right, right. So unless there are any additional uh comments, I think thinking about open meeting law and thinking about how even edits, you kind of have to, it it constitutes a meeting. We've done that considered properly tonight. I'd, I'd like to ask your permission for Andy and I to finish this to compare our notes from the discussion tonight and then just to uh submit it.
For a motion?
Yeah, please.
So I move that we designate the WNESU Chair and the superintendent of schools to finalize the document we all worked on this evening and submit it to the powers that be.
Yeah, it's the redistricting task.
The redistricting task force.
BSBA, I'm not sure which one it is, to the powers that be.
I do think that it's going to the
That's correct. Yeah, that is how that's gonna work.
To the appropriate committee.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Uh, Esther, Arthur, uh, do we have in favor?
Yeah, thank you. Any opposed? Let me poll the people online. Uh, Jamie, Jamie having a vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Team? Thank you. Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, sincere thanks to each of you. You've been so thoughtful and engaged. I just really appreciate it. And I'm relatively uh short notice. And this is good practice for us as we understand the issues and the complexities, because this is gonna be a long process.
Yeah. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you both.
All right, so uh we don't need to do director's comments tonight and we are adjourned at six fifty-eight.
The only thing I would say.